Klein.
Here.
President Larson.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
All present.
All right. First item is review of the review and approve the minutes from the last board meeting from December five. Chair would entertain a motion.
Second.
Are there any corrections, additions, or changes to the minutes?
Yeah.
I think there's a correction on page three.
On page three, okay, where?
Paragraph.
Under library amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So noted, I'll make those corrections.
What was the change?
It's going to be a counter.
Oh, okay. All right, any other changes? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, see if I have a say in that. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Any comments from the four? I'm going to assume there's not. Governor John, it's up to you.
Well, I'm not a resident.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the direct legislation. And before we get into discussion, I want to just provide a little background on that. At last month's board meeting, Mark was substituting for Joe Cothran, who was the chair of Public Works. And Mark was just summarizing the fact that there was a discussion at that Public Works meeting on the issue of direct legislation, if I'm correct. Okay. And now because that was not an agenda item in December, we didn't have any other type of discussion about it, other than for Mark to recount what had transpired at the Public Works session. But I did indicate that with respect to the topic, that I've at least put it on this month's agenda for discussion, okay? Now, I noticed in our board packets, it actually included language which said we were going to repeal that ordinance, okay? Now, did that come out of Public Works?
No.
The recommendation, okay.
No, and it doesn't have an ordinance number, it just shows you the information for discussion.
Now, we've talked about that ordinance in the past. We talked about it in the context of does, is it reasonably clear? And that language was obviously lifted from other comparable language used elsewhere in the state of Wisconsin. There are really two issues associated with that particular ordinance. The first one is it limits the board's ability to spend capital dollars to some dollar amount, which is, and requires us to go to referendum if we want to do that. Second issue then is it sets a particular financial limit, at which point then triggers the referendums, okay? And I would just remind everybody that when that ordinance was presented to the residents in 2002, I think it was, for approval, it was approved by a very, very overwhelming number, like eight hundred to two hundred. I mean, it was three to one, it was a large number. And one of the practical questions I've got, Tom, and I meant to call you today and didn't, I don't know if you can answer this question off the top of your head or not. This is a test, you will be graded.
Sure.
For any community that might have an ordinance like this, if you want to change it, can the board just change it, or does it have to go back to referendum?
I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I cannot answer that off the top of my head, but I can find out.
Now, I think, I mean, I don't mind saying that I'm a little, on the one hand, we tried to have a conversation once before, which said, do we have a clear understanding as to what the $150,000 relates to?
Yeah, we never agreed.
And we ended up with three different interpretations that night at the board. Okay? But we certainly had two instances of where we have used it, three actually, the two most recent referendums, as well as the Cradley Lane project. Now, the Cradley Lane project was one where the cost was probably more than $150,000, but the two principal contractors involved had also agreed that they would put their money, they would give their money to do that project upfront, which is unusual. So therefore, the village, when it paid its portion, it was less than $150,000. So we've kind of at least interpreted from a practical perspective, which is how much money would the village have to borrow related to a given project, how much would we be on the hook for? And if it was less than 150, we don't go to referendum, if it's more than 150, we do. Now, having said that, there was discussion at Public Works, and so the table's kind of open in terms of discussion. I'm not looking for resolution on this issue tonight, solely because I think it's too big of an issue to pop on the citizenry on January two and say, oh, by the way, guess what we did last night? I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do. But I certainly would like to have some discussion, and Mark, you wanted to have the discussion, so feel free.
Yep, I certainly didn't expect any change tonight, I just wanted to get it on the agenda for all the reasons Larry mentioned. First and foremost, just to talk about it and to get clear with it. I thought we had two examples, good and bad, of its use. One was the village hall addition, I thought that was a good referendum type item. I personally don't think street construction and reconstruction is a particularly good application of a referendum. I think there's a lot of methods for the public to get involved in public hearings and such before a project becomes finalized and approved. I know I've sat at many of them before a project is finally approved. So I guess I'm, my thinking off the top of is, while I'm not looking to get rid of the referendum, as I said, like a village hall addition or something that affects everyone that isn't specific, it's not a terribly bad thing. For street reconstruction, I think it's awfully limiting and, to be quite honest, puts, takes away the control that you need to be able to do what we do here. I think there's a lot of, the village isn't that big, people have a lot of input with the number of meetings we have and just the process itself for at least a Public Works type project. If it was up to me, I'd like to see that modified. Hundred and fifty thousand on top of it all, it doesn't go that far these days with a Capital Works project of any type of street reconstruction.
So your real issue is the dollar amount that's in the ordinance?
Well, my, the dollar amount and, quite frankly, I don't really, I think it's a little, well, you can tell by the turnout we get here, very little, I think the people expect us to be tempered with our decisions and wise with the dollar. And when we, when you get to a project, each year we go through capital projects, we analyze what we should do, maybe what we shouldn't do, just so we budget. Some drop off, some stay on. Then I think when a project comes, hits the light of day and it becomes aware to people, I'm not so sure they're as informed as they can be. And to be quite blunt, sometimes they can stop a project needlessly. I mean, emotions swing some of this thing, some of these things. And if I seen people sitting at the meetings as we get up to these decisions and they still had the same opinion, I'd probably respect that a little more than just showing up to vote on it, based on what they may have heard or might have read. And frankly, they may not be as informed about a particular project.
Thoughts by anybody else?
Yeah, I would add just a little bit to that, I think the informed part of this is so much a key, and with what goes on here and behind the scenes, making an executive, intelligent, fact-founded decision ultimately can save the community a lot of money, as opposed to stopgap measures limited by a cap. And I think that with repairs, that's something that's more the job of Public Works. Our engineers have already determined, we've got grades of roads throughout the community. I've been down this road, I mean, it's virtually fallen apart. A lot of roads are, I think that it needs to be something that we decide with the facts that we get from the people that are in a position to do so. And I think having a little more flexibility, like Mark said, and this is advantageous for the success of the community in the long term.
Well, I agree that when it comes to road repair, we are very limited by that $150,000 cap. Let's also remember what precipitated this, and it was a multimillion dollar project that had to do with streets. And there's a big difference between repairing a road and rebuilding a road, which is exactly what, as I said, precipitated this action, to have this in the first place. So I'm not registering an opinion on whether to keep it or remove this, but just as a kind of a historical note about why it was instituted in the first place. The irony would be that if we got rid of it because of how it inhibits us from repairing our roads when it was actually what caused in the first place.
Well, repairing and the major construction project that you're referring to are pretty different.
Oh, I agree with that completely, but...
Would you be more comfortable with like a higher level if we proposed a higher level? A higher limit?
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I agree though, that the issue is one of, do we repair a road or do we do a complete reconstruction of the road?
And should the entire village decide whether a road that's falling apart should go on their taxes?
That's the problem.
Because we are elected to make certain decisions.
The real irony in this, in the last referendum that was defeated to repair that section of road, was that had the referendum passed, 50% of the cost of that would have been borne by the residents. Any repair that we do on it now, any patchwork, will be borne by the entire municipality.
One thing that I was thinking, though, regardless of whether it's an issue that has to go back to referendum to change, I think it probably should, I think it would be appropriate for the people who voted it in to make that decision.
Klein?
Well, I think that as far as the road repairs and that, I think should be decided by Public Works and by us. And if it, nowadays, if it's costing 150 to repair a road, that we either have to raise the limit or something so the roads can get fixed. Because if you keep all these little repairs, I think in the long run, it's going to end up being more expensive to do a little repair now, a little repair later. But as Mark said, for something as major as the village hall addition, that did seem more appropriate for the whole village to vote on.
Now, I'm saying, I find myself in a strange, if not uncomfortable, position in discussing this whole issue, for a whole variety of reasons. Not the least of which was, I was certainly one of the, you know, major advocates for utilizing the referendum initiative. And I still think that is a good idea for municipalities. At the time, when we were drafting that language and setting, the language essentially was lifted from another municipality, and it was recommended to us that we use that language, because that's the only language that had ever been tested in the court systems and found to be okay. The dollar amount was one which was put together by, you know, a committee of residents as they were engaged in the activity at the time, and the number was arbitrary, it didn't have any particular basis for it. At the time, I argued against that particular number, thinking also that it was a little bit low. As we sit here tonight and discuss it, I feel uncomfortable in the sense that, you know, I like the fact that we, as Mark said, the referendum really, you know, played its role in terms of the, you know, should be added on to the village hall? Do the residents want to pay for that? Does that fall into the category of something people feel like we either need, want, and are willing to pay for, and so we ought to vote on that? And residents approved that. The other project, does that have some carryover to the other, some other issues that have gone on here in the village over the last five years? Sure it does. Would I want to change this referendum or the language that's in that ordinance in order to benefit myself and/or anyone in San Cray Station personally? Absolutely not. As far as I observe, we could patch the road and make it go as long as we have to. So in that sense, I feel a little strange talking about it this close following the most recent election. And it makes me very uncomfortable, but nevertheless, I certainly have no trouble dealing with it. In fact, I was the one that raised the issue before, which is, you know, is the language clear enough even for us as a board to say, you know, when do we pull the, when is the $150,000 threshold met? Number one, number two, do you like that one? In the previous board, of which, I think there's probably only three of us sitting here now who were on that board, said, well, if we were going to change, I think we'd probably change the dollar amount, okay? Problem I've got, as I just listened to the conversation, which is, it was okay for the building, but it's not good for road maintenance, whether it's San Cray Station or Helen Street, or whether we have to redo Galahad. I don't know how you separate capital projects within the ordinance, because it currently says any capital project, which essentially means something we're going to have to borrow funds for. And I don't know how you can write an ordinance that would be adequate.
I think it'd be possible to do, you know, there are capital projects that really add infrastructure, like the new building here, or by...
Well, streets are part of infrastructure.
Yeah, they are, they are. But there's also an existing street, you know, it exists, the infrastructure exists, you're just trying to maintain it. And so if, you know, if the roof blew off our building and was going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars, we wouldn't necessarily, you know, want to wait until somebody could go to a referendum and repair the roof here while we couldn't use the building. So I think it would be possible to rewrite it, so it would have to do with maintenance type activity versus where you're really adding infrastructure. And that's my take on it. But I share your same comments, because I wasn't supportive of the original referendum. And I know that we had to, we had to use the same language that another city did here in Wisconsin. And I think if we, if we had our druthers, we probably would have said, yeah, but, you know, this is very, very, I think there was some discussions that this is going to be very restrictive to a board, to the village. But at the time, that's what was, that's what wanted to be done by the individuals and that were seeking the referendum. But I think if we had our druthers, we probably would have thought it through a little bit more and maybe done something along maintenance items or whatever it is. Or maybe even, I don't know, the limit does seem a little bit low to me, but I know that was done by a committee, and the committee consensus was $150,000. But my opinion is, is that it is restrictive to the board, it was intended to be restrictive, and, you know, now we're living with that, which I think is fine. I don't have a problem with that, it's, you know, it's working.
There's no question it's telling the fact on the board in terms of making that
Yeah.
sharpen our pencils.
Yes, well, and I think, and I think the board has been good stewards of the dollars that the people pay into the tax levy. I don't think the debt in the last four to five years, since this, since this referendum process has been in place, I don't know if it's because of referendum process or because of the board members that are here now. But I don't know what our debt increase has been in the last four years, but it certainly wasn't anything like it was the previous date. And so, and so my point is, is you can have a board, and I'm proud of the fact that this board does watch the expenses, both capital and operating expenses, very, very carefully, cautiously. But this board isn't going to be around forever, you don't know. And so the question is, is knowing that, do we need to have some sort of restriction on a board that might be here in the future?
My concern with putting some type of additional language in to say what it can be used for is, again, we already have problems with interpretation. And one person could read it, interpret it differently than somebody else.
Well, the idea would be to clean it up, clean the language up so that it is, so it is straight.
The other issue with this is that if we have a developer who we sign a development agreement with, when we're agreeing to that project, we're actually breaking that law.
Yes.
And we wouldn't actually know it, but we would be.
Depends on how the financing language was agreed to.
Well, and that's...
Because in most of our developers' agreements, the developer pays for everything and they pay for it, and we don't borrow any money.
But we do borrow the money and some, then they pay us back, sometimes. I mean, and then the residents pay us back, there's special assessments, but we still have to borrow the money, and that's where that comes in.
Yeah, I understand. And I share the same views.
And that's my biggest concern is...
But I guess I share Sandra's point, is the public voted on it, I would be hard-pressed to say that this board should rescind it without, at a minimum, a public hearing on it, and to get a lot of input from the people of this village, what, you know, a comment and discussion as to what some of the issues are with it, and see what their input would be. I think it may, I think we'd have looked at it from a legal point of view, and I think it is possible for the board perhaps to rescind it without, it's legal for us to vote on it and decide after a period of time, after using it for a period of time, that we can rescind it. I wouldn't say that I would agree with that, but I think it's possible to do. But my point is, is I think we need some public interaction here before we go too far down that road.
Well, I think when you do an ordinance, whether it's to put it in place or rescind, a lot of them in this type are public hearings. But I have a problem with another going, doing another election and a referendum, because again, it's a lot of emotion and the fact, the facts are the facts, and if we have things that need to be taken care of, we got to be able to do it.
No, it is restrictive on a maintenance point of view, it's dangerous. There are things that could happen to our sewer systems, it might cost more than $150,000, and we would be, we'd be out of luck trying to get that thing done in a timely fashion.
In an emergency situation, we can go ahead and do, if you had what you just described as a major sewer problem, you take care of that immediately. I think that's, if I remember correctly, that's way out, that's out of that restriction. You have to do something like that.
It is?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Well, if there's sewer water running down your street,
Yeah.
you're going to have somebody come in and take care of it immediately. There's a health hazard there.
And the answer is that would be taking care of it, and we have the means with which to do that. In fact, I mean, if you look at the last four years, you know, we had the one problem which everybody said, you know, would never happen, which is literally all three pumps that carry the sewage across the Malibu, they all went out simultaneously. And even during the debate over this original ordinance, so I said, well, what would we do if, you know, if that went out and if that cost more than $150,000? Well, what we found out is replacing all those pumps costs about 50. It's unlikely that we'd ever experience that again, but you say, what could really happen? I don't know that like, everything from the north end of Helen Street to the south end, and even ten years down the road, could they all blow up and literally fail at the same time?
No, those are all new systems that are in it right now, so we don't have to worry about that.
Well, and take Fourth Street or Third Street, are they all going to blow, literally, to the point where they're all, yep, it's not the people's individual systems. You know, couldn't, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know to what extent the $150,000 number is too low to deal with emergencies. I don't know if we'd ever really get an emergency board, we literally have to get something done in 15 days or 30 days. I don't know how realistic that is, very honestly. And if we had to put a new roof on this place, it isn't going to cost $150,000 bucks. It's going to cost a lot of money.
But there is a valuable lesson here too, and that is that we don't let a street go, as long as some of those streets over in St. Cray Station have gone with minimal attention to them. Now, those roads will get fixed, they'll be patched, they'll be made usable, they'll be made so that we can run a plow over them. They'll be fixed, because right now, I think you'd agree with me, they're dangerous. And then what we need to do is make sure...
Well, it keeps the traffic speed down.
I'll bet it does. But I think what, the lesson that we've gotten from this is, let's take care of our infrastructure, by that I mean the roads, as well as everything else, on a somewhat routine basis, so as not to incur the necessity of going to the public to find out, can we fix our streets?
I think the larger lesson is that I find the whole referendum thing to be, to be, I think it reflects people's attitude that somewhere along the way, they weren't listened to. And so something got enacted to, under what guise, you know, we're going to put a spending limit, I think it was something to shortcut ultimate board action, which I don't fault. My fear is, is it's, I don't view it as the typical way for this type of municipal government to operate, and there's always a backlash and the pendulum swings. And right now, we're at an extreme, and as Joe said, he's concerned about down the line, I can almost guarantee us somewhere down the line, as this changes, that thing is going to change back to the way it was before, because it's not moderate. And if you're at all interested in keeping a referendum in place, it would be my suggestion to modify it so that you can conduct business in a somewhat normal manner, not fix, and I'm only using St. Cray Station Road as an example, because it's a recent example, I don't care about anything else up there.
But it's a good example.
It's a perfect example. Now, we, because a lot of people voted on that and for emotional reasons. The road has to get fixed. Do I care if it gets fixed? Not really, personally, I could give a damn. But it's part, why do we sit at these meetings and talk with the engineers, hire them, and try to do a good job, when ultimately, it gets sent out to vote and it's shot down on the whims of people who are carrying some baggage with them to these, to the election booth? You know, I don't want, you know, why should I even show up at a meeting? So I don't think it's, I think in the long run, it's a... So I, I don't think it's, I, I think in the long run, it's a piss poor way to, to run a small municipality. Pure and simple.
Well, certainly one way to look at it, to kind of put a little different framework on it, is, is, does it represent the kind of language we would want to leave for future boards and residents?
I think it does with modifications.
I'll admit, I, and you could, and I, I can both agree and disagree with Mark, I can come down on both sides. I happen to like the idea of the referendum concept, when you start talking about, you know, clearly something like the Village Hall Edition, I thought that was, that's just a perfect, uh, perfect case of where you could do it. Let's not say you couldn't do, uh, so-called informal, but nevertheless binding referendums as well, you know, as a municipality, and some of the municipalities around us, you know, as we've talked about this issue, and some of them have said, you know, if they're gonna take issue X before they act on it, they would rather do a referendum to find out how people feel on it. That's really, I'm, I'm personally not, you know, concerned at all about the impact on Sacred Station. I'm more concerned with, you know, two years, five years, ten years down the road, is it, is it, as Mark described, a moderate, a type of policy that allows the next set of board trustees to manage effectively? I, ideally, I just assume have some other board even take care of, deal with this issue, and I, and I could just sidestep it. You know, Mark wanted to put it on the agenda, maybe a touchy issue, well, so be it, you know, we, we get paid to deal with touchy issues. And so I put it on the agenda, so it doesn't bother me to deal with it.
Yeah, I hope, I, I've not casted any aspersions or anything, I'm just looking at it.
No, no.
I would say if by the end of the year, if we, if somebody came up with an idea, I would be pleased. I, I just, I just feel it needs to be talked about regardless, and I, and I know, I know some of the awkward positions out there, but I don't think, I don't think it's that awkward, it's, uh, because once it's on the table, everybody gets the chance to explain, and I think it has a lot of validity. Um, there's a lot of good points to it, and I think it'll carry some historical perspective for future boards regardless of what happens. Even if it got overturned tomorrow, for example, there'll be the reference to a referendum period. And when I indicated it's a, not such a good way to run a municipality, I'm gonna speak a little extreme on that because I, I, just for some emotional emphasis, but the Village Hall Edition, uh, was a good example of where a referendum is, got to see where everybody felt on, on the deal. And we had, uh, like you said earlier, we had to pay attention to what we were doing and forced us to maybe do a little better job of preparation than we may have before. We got to see a heck of a slideshow from George. I don't know who would've got the chance to see that before. But, and, and it took some time, and we got it out there, and whether it was one vote or a hundred, it, it passed, and, but I was concerned, too, on something like that, because there are a lot of issues down here, a lot of people aren't aware of.
True.
But at the same time, um, you know, those are the, the gives and takes in the whole thing. I'm just looking to get a little more, uh, back if we can with some modification in that referendum.
And just a little bit of background on the municipality that we modeled this from was Mount Horn, and, um, the reason that they had put theirs in place, because they had built a library, and it was, there was a disagreement on where that library should be located. And so then they, they put this referendum in place, and theirs is at a million dollars, and they've gotten rid of theirs, and theirs was a million dollars.
Any other comments or suggestions for how to proceed? If not, uh, I'm, I'm glad that you, that you raised the issue. I, I agree with you, I think it needs to be discussed.
Well, I'm gonna, I-
I don't know what, quite what to do with loan four.
I didn't have any idea, it, it only, I'm, I'm gonna throw this up, uh, is, would it be worth, would it be suitable to send it to, say, Public Welfare, have it on their agenda, let them decide if they maybe develop a, a, a small citizens committee or a committee and talk about it, maybe hold a couple meetings and see, test the water, maybe look at some language, or, or do a little prep work with it, if they could fit it into their schedule?
Oh, you don't raise them to meet?
Well, I, I think for a lot of us, I, you know, Jim's new, Colleen's new on the board, or relatively, and Sandra's been on before, but I, I think there's, if nothing else, do a little research and look in to see what the possibilities are. And/or, I'd even go so far as say, as I trust, I, I know they're bright and can think, are creative, is look into it and, and see what might work. Maybe we have a, 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 a public, what do they call it, town meeting or something like that, just see what the general consensus is. I don't think we're faced with anything, uh, that needs immediate correction, but I, like I said, to go down the line with this and to run into another situation, I think it's gonna create a backlash where then you may eliminate the entire referendum process. If we can modify it and get it workable, maybe we'll put something into place that is, that will really work down the line, and everybody will be thankful for it.
I, I do have one question that George brought up, and, uh, not knowing the exact answer. If there was a natural disaster that came through, it be a flood or a tornado, and before federal funding or state funding kicked in and we had to step up to the plate, do we have that ability currently, or would that have to go through a referendum to address also?
I think, I'm gonna just speculate, speculative question. One of the reasons why all municipalities carry what's called an undesignedated reserve dollar amount, um, is to handle totally unexpected emergencies like that. Well, I'm assuming that's where the dollars would come from, now would that, would that constitute a capital project? And the answer is, it, it well might.
I wouldn't define that as a capital project. Capital project is something you plan for. We don't plan for disasters, and when it comes to things like sewer and water and anything that relates to that, to me, that's a public health issue that needs to be addressed immediately. Um, Mark, would, as you're, our disaster, um, rep-
Emergency manager.
Emergency management representative, right? Do you have any insight on what, on, if there was a type of a situation that Jim just described?
Well, I think Larry probably hit on the head for, for the, a short period of time that that funding would have to come from the reserves, but then if it meets the criteria for the state and of course the federal level, then all that would be reimbursed. I, I think that would be the easiest, and then I also agree with yours that I don't, I firstly wouldn't believe that that would be a capital project. I mean, obviously there would be infrastructure rebuilding, those types of things, but again, it's not something that you look ahead and plan for and function it for. It would be covered, and I, I believe I heard, uh, the attorney mentioned, too, that if some insurance, you know, depending on what type of items were damaged, a lot of private insurance for the, the residents as well as the insurance for the village would cover portions of that as well.
But you wouldn't want to find that your hands are totally tied in, in matters that need decisions, which I think is what you're talking about.
And this last question?
Not anything.
I, I just been spending, I just was looking at some of the things with respect to, uh, how we could change this ordinance. This is, if it's direct legislation, it's what's called a charter ordinance, which requires that you have a charter ordinance to, uh, amend or repeal that. But what I haven't found the answer to is, there's different procedures for enacting a charter ordinance, and so the question in my mind still is whether you have to go back to the electors to enact another one, or whether the board could do that. And so I look, I was able to log into the office and go to the LEAK site, because they've got that, um, we've got that resource, and it, the, the opinion that they referred to doesn't really address that issue, so. The statute, the statute does say that, uh, they can't be vetoed by the mayor if it was a city, uh, and then there can't be a repeal or amendment within two years, which is all fine, because we're kind of beyond that point. But then the last sentence says, "The common council or village board may submit a proposition to repeal or amend the ordinance or resolution at any election." Well, that's ambiguous to me, because is that implying that you then must go back to an election to do that, or, you know, or not? So I'll just have to, I'll look at it and probably talk to them.
Well, I kind of got the gist of it, to the extent that there was any kind of change we proposed, then would the board do it, or would we go back to the, to the president's preference, see if we'd go back to the-
Well, since we aren't gonna decide anything tonight, would it be amenable to, 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 give, say, Public Welfare the charge of at least researching the latitudes of that ordinance?
Would you be willing to do?
Sure, in addition to what the attorney can provide, or?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, for example, if there's some additional information, he could give it to you, and then you guys could at least have, when you had a board, have a, a segment of your, uh, update, be able to go with that. Right after the garbage.
Carbage is fine.
Maybe this isn't the same category.
Get with me?
Okay, then we will move on. Plan Commission. Thank you for, uh, being willing to do that. Uh, Plan Commission Recommendation, um, I don't think I was your for the Plan Commission, so I don't believe we have a chair update unless, what?
They didn't have a meeting last, in December, so there's no minutes here.
Okay, Finance Committee. The, uh, Finance Committee recommended, um, I'll get there, I'll get there. We recommend paying our bills.
We, we were gonna approve December non-recurring claims to, 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 uh, to, uh, to-
That's what I was looking for. Is that your motion?
That was my motion.
Okay. So the motion to pay the bills from Joe, Mark, you said?
I will second, I guess.
Are there any questions on the, uh, the bills for December? Seeing none, then we'll, uh, vote on that, we'll do a roll call. Catherine?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the Hudson Area Senior Citizens Center, the village has always donated a thousand dollars to the Senior Citizens Center. The Finance Committee is recommending that we do that again for two thousand seven, and it's in the budget. Well, I would make that motion. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call, start on this end. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Uh, yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Larry? Yes. Okay. All right. Uh, the next two, seeing the capital projects, equipment funding, discussion, possible action, and solicitation of loan bids, uh, both those items kind of go together. Uh, members of the Finance Committee already have this hand up, it's not really an eye test, but it looks like one. And it's, it's, it's a reference document, you go from the board to- Can you guys have one? Sandra?
Did you feel, thank you.
The purpose of this, the reason I put these things together each year when we do, you know, and about this stage, we've already approved the budget for two thousand seven, which includes the capital projects, okay? And so that's, that's a part of the budget process. Now, as we go forward, it's, okay, now we're gonna do Project A, B, and C. What we need to do is identify, okay, what is that project? What's it gonna cost? Do we have any funds set aside? For example, we've got the police car and related equipment, uh, our original budget called for that to add up to about, uh, thirty thousand, seven hundred. We had nine hundred, nine thousand to carry forward, which means, um, we need to borrow some amount of money, probably an amount of twenty-two, three forty-three, to do that project. Then we had another lesser project of thirty-five hundred, the public works equipment. So the question becomes one of, what should be the financing terms for that? So if you combine these two, it's roughly twenty-six thousand dollars for the, for the squad car, the amount that we need to borrow, plus the thirty-five hundred. So I usually put these together, so at least both the Finance Committee as well as the board can look at, say, yeah, that makes sense, or no, it doesn't make sense at all, that's stupid. Okay? Uh, now for both of these, uh, we said the expected life, the life expectancy is four years or more for the one, and could well be, you know, five years or even longer for the other equipment. And what I threw out for purposes of discussion was to say, okay, those, that twenty-six thousand should probably be borrowed and repaid in, uh, over twenty-four months' term. Okay? Now, keep in mind, when we say twenty-four months, uh, what we would then do is authorize Gloria to go out and solicit bids for, for money, she gets that back, we approve that, so, okay, now here's the money. Um, the actual payments don't occur until two thousand eight and two thousand nine, so that's the two-year period that we're talking about. And then I also look at, and say, okay, well, what would those payments be ballpark? And this is about eleven thousand, round numbers probably twelve thousand a year. Um, yeah, it's all right, yeah, twelve, probably sixteen thousand a year, because that then affects the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, total revenue requirements for the village. So you're trying to, we're, so we're trying to look at a variety of things here, so the issue in front of the House tonight is, uh, we've already done solicitation of bids for the squad car, um, and there's a recommendation on that, uh, which we'll be discussing later. But what we usually do is just authorize the administrator to go out and solicit loans in a dollar amount not to exceed, like, say, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand, get close to what we anticipate. Uh, and then she comes back with that information, we pick the banking vendor, and away we go. So the first question is, for the, what we're anticipating, or what we're trying to approve tonight, is, you know, borrowing some amount of money, the terms of which the administrator needs to know before she can go out and solicit. Okay? So the question is, does twenty-four months make sense? Should it be more? Should it be less? That's, that's really the discussion when you combine these two issues together. So we'd be borrowing enough to cover item one on this list, which is the police car and the related equipment, which, uh, minus the nine thousand carryover, is twenty-two thousand, three forty-three. The other equipment's thirty-five hundred, so I'll just quickly add that up, three, four, eight, five, twenty-five, eight forty-three, so let's round that to twenty-six thousand. Let's see manually as a number, for your purposes.
For a total number?
Yeah.
I had thirty-five, I had thirty-five thousand, two hundred, twenty-one, five for the car, two thousand for the light bar, eighty-two hundred for the data.
Yeah, but you got nine thousand carryover.
That's, has nothing to do with it, that's, that's gonna be used to equip the car, we still need the twenty-one. Correct, the car. The nine thousand is to, in addition to the twenty-one thousand loan, so it's about thirty thousand total spending.
Yeah, we had nine thousand.
The amount that we put forward for the capital expenses already has the nine thousand dollars removed from it.
Or does?
Yes. Because we couldn't put in for a capital project of thirty thousand, looking at borrow thirty, where it had the nine, and this was the way we discussed it, so we've put in that, that final number that we needed in order to complete the car, which is purchase the car, and getting a light bar for that car, and then to give it change over from one twenty.
Oh, okay, see-
The nine thousand dollars is already basically spoken.
It's already been applied.
Correct.
So the number we're looking at, thirty-one, three forty-three?
Ah, okay.
Is that correct?
And if you add the confined space?
I don't have that.
Equipment, too. Thirty-five, two hundred.
Did you add the confined, number four? Did you add that into that?
No.
Okay. What I noticed on that one is that, that says life expectancy, five years. You want to add that in? Would, so that would be, actually end up being four years?
Well, the car's about four years too, so, I mean.
No, that's what I'm saying. So the confined space would become four years.
Same, both from a timing perspective, in terms of buying.
Yeah.
It makes sense to combine these two capital projects in one loan. And so that was number one. Secondly, you, you put down the life expectancy as kind of a kind of a benchmark.
So you want to add in the old PW side as well?
Yes. So in terms of authorizing or solicit dollars, it would be thirty, what'd you say, thirty-five?
Thirty-five thousand, two hundred. I just rounded the car to twenty-one, five.
Oh, I got you.
So what's the total number again, Gloria?
Thirty-five, two hundred. And then my other question is that Jim brought up, and I know we're going to discuss it a little bit later, is the architect's agreement. Am I going to need to borrow, get authorization to get a partial on the, is that architect's agreement got to be paid, or need to be paid upfront? Or is there a certain amount due within thirty days after we sign it?
If I remember correctly, and Public Safety helped me out on this, as I understood it, it was going to be, we'll be getting a monthly bill. And I don't, do you remember what that number was?
No, but I think you better just start getting set up for something like a construction loan, like any other project.
Yeah.
Going, so if you have to draw funds on a monthly basis, you can.
So then we should also be authorizing the village administrator to do what are called item number three here, which is, you know, the village hall.
You want to add two and three together there?
Yes.
Yeah, both of them is twenty years, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Let's just go back to where we started off. I was, I was working off the assumption that it made sense to combine for borrowing purposes items number one and number four.
And five?
Actually, I'm sorry, I, we didn't, we discussed this at finance. The land reclamation and the siren, we're not going to do anything with until April.
Okay.
Sorry.
It does say that for the architect payment due within thirty days, once a month I'm signing.
Thank you.
Okay, so bottom line, we are going to need the funds, as Mark mentioned.
It could be more than the architect.
So in terms of, I'm not trying to create a motion, but rather just to, you know, set the stage for a motion. We would need to authorize Gloria to go solicit two loans. One would be in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. That would be repaid in twenty-four months, i.e. two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And then also to solicit funds.
My suggestion to do is get a hope, to go to, call several banks and ask them what sort of package, tell them what our situation is, and see what kind of package they can arrange for.
No, the thing, we had said that we would build, the project would cost, was it seven sixty? Was that the number in the referendum?
Amount not to exceed seven sixty.
Which would also be offset by the amount of dollars we already have.
That is correct.
Okay.
So you subtract a hundred.
The net of that is six hundred and twenty-one.
Right.
Okay. So is that, so to me, that would be the dollar amount that she would then contact, most likely the state as well. Is borrowing money currently about twenty-year projects at five point five. At least that was the rate today. Could change tomorrow.
I'm going to go back. I was under the impression that thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollar loan would be for, paid out back over four years, not just in.
Two years.
The, the motion from Finance was two years.
Sorry, I was going by the printed, what was, what was printed here?
Well, that's life expectancy.
Oh, over here.
Life expectancy.
It's misleading.
Ah, okay.
Life expectancy versus.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Take the half.
Half-life.
Half-life.
Half-life for Ford.
I just had a question. In looking at the, I didn't, they're providing to me. You were talking, you added a thousand dollars to the car, that you had, you went from twenty thousand five hundred to twenty-one, five?
Well, the issue statements are all at twenty-one thousand, back, the issue statements that you gave me.
Twenty thousand five hundred. And I realized the bid came in at twenty thousand, three thirty, but that, that would include then, we would capitalize the twenty thousand five hundred. But then part of that nine thousand dollars would then go towards the payment of the car as well.
Oh, so that's what part of the nine thousand was.
And the rest of the nine thousand dollars would go for the.
Well, the only issue statement I have is for the one that was provided to Public Safety.
Okay. Well, there were two. There was an issue statement related to the capital project.
Okay.
And then an issue statement that selects.
So take off a thousand.
Yeah, so I guess I'd hate to see it.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying.
Yes, no, that's a good correction. Okay. So the car is really, so the car and the LED and the mobile computer, those, those numbers that were in the capital budget, those are the numbers we should be using to authorize Gloria to go out and solicit dollars.
Correct. Which shows here is thirty thousand, seven hundred, and I guess you're adding on that four.
Yep.
So do you come up with thirty-four, two? Good. Okay.
Thirty thousand, seven, and thirty-five hundred. Thirty-four, two?
Yeah, we're not done yet. And I guess I'd clarify in that issue statement that you're authorizing me to purchase for capital.
We're talking earlier, that had a sort of focus number out here, just two years. Not really based on anything other than, in fact, it's nice to just get ahead of things.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm not in Finance Committee, so coming up here relating, so.
Going to need that, because you don't want to be doubling up on police cars.
Okay.
We've got one that's falling apart.
Reasonably clear. What we're doing. Got a squad car, we got equipment, and we're buying a piece of equipment for the public works. The amount we need to borrow is thirty-four, two, okay? Slightly less than we had before. So not just in the interest of keeping them separate, I will make a motion that says that the board authorizes the village administrator to solicit from local and state lending authorities. A loan amount, a loan in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars to be repaid in full by the end of two thousand, with payments in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, with complete, completion of payments by the end of two thousand nine.
For capital equipment.
For capital equipment. Questions on that? If not, then we'll vote on that with roll call. Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes. Okay. Now, on the other one, with respect to the village hall project. I'll do a similar kind of motion, and say we authorize the administrator to solicit construction and or capital type loan in the amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-one thousand to be repaid over a twenty-year period. To cover the cost of the village addition. How's that sound?
Second.
Reread that amount again?
Amount, six twenty, six hundred and twenty-one thousand.
No. You wanted to reread the motion?
Nope. Gloria gave it to me. I just wanted to confirm what I had written down. Seven sixty minus one thirty-nine.
No.
Okay.
A construction loan? Yeah. You said a construction and or what type? You had two types of loans there.
Finance, you can just call it.
Okay.
Capital financing. And you, you are comfortable with this number, with this number? And that was, that was obviously the referendum number. That's the number I remembered.
I, I know that was the number that was polled, but projecting out to the end of year, I know that it's going to be a hundred and forty-six thousand
Okay, so.
Of interest, so it's, it's going to be less than.
So it may, it may be less. Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't overshoot it.
No.
Okay. Rather be conservative. Okay. Any further questions, discussion on that issue? If not, we'll vote on the motion to borrow the six hundreds are authorized. Gloria to go out and solicit bids for six hundred and twenty-one thousand. Start over here. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
I do.
Okay. Okay, Public Works?
We did not meet, so I do not have a report.
Okay. All right, Public Safety?
We had a rather lively meeting on December the fourteenth. The minutes are in your booklet. Just to give you a quick rundown, we did talk at length with, or we did have asked, invited Todd from Elliott Architects to come in. And Todd went through the document, AIA document B one fifty-one dash one ninety-seven. As he, we requested that he did, that he would do, and he did. Did a great job. And we, as a Public Safety Committee, feel very comfortable with recommending this contract for your approval. And I believe this would be an issue statement similar to the one that we had for the, the other contracts. So I would like to make a motion, I would ask my colleagues to feel free to edit my motion, that we accept the contract as presented from Elliott Architects for the building addition and renovation.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I think if you're comfortable, I realize the language, that it's a very, very lengthy contract, but having now spent the time to sit down with the architect and the committee, you're collectively comfortable, the language is okay.
Yes, we are. In fact, what we discovered, as Todd went through it, there are many sections in this contract that were written to protect us. Yes, they are looking out for themselves, which I would hope they would do, but also to protect us as a, the other side. There are details of our discussion in the minutes from Public Safety. You'll see them at the bottom of the first page, goes on to the second page. Where it says village hall addition, and you can see the items that were of particular interest to us. I don't want to bring up anything else until the board has a chance to digest this, so that we can vote on it.
You looked at the, you, you looked at the contract last month, if I'm not mistaken, Tom? You're comfortable with it?
We did compare the numbers that we found in there with the numbers that we used when we did our objective analysis, and they are consistent. There were no surprises in that. Our concern was more with the other wording. We're okay with it.
Okay. Good, all right. Any other questions on that issue? If not, we'll vote on accepting and approving the architect's agreement. And we'll do that with a roll call, just to be cautious. Start over here. Sandra?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Larry, yes.
Along the lines of the project, I'd like to draw your attention to the middle of the, back of the first page. And that is, Mark's proposed an ad hoc committee be organized. Well, we don't feel it's necessary to bring it to the board for a vote. We just want to draw your attention to it, that one is being formed. And that we would ask anyone who has suggestions that they be funneled, I guess, through Gloria. We don't have a chairman yet of this committee, of this ad hoc committee. So the question would be, if people do have input, how should it be forwarded to the ad hoc committee for consideration? And since Gloria is on that ad hoc committee, and she is centrally located here, this does not necessarily mean that she, well.
Wait a second, I'm, we have an ad hoc committee?
Mark's had a move to recommend, oh.
Yeah, but you just said you're.
I didn't think we needed to have board approval for that.
I think you got to start with, you know, we've got, we've got three entities involved here. You've got the board, we have the public safety, now we have the ad hoc. And what I would like to have some discussion about is, what's the role of each of those three? Now, as I, if I recall, the original suggestion to have an ad hoc is to recognize that there may well be some construction-related issues, as there are any kind of project like this, where somebody needs to get together and agree to make a change or approve something. Like today or tomorrow, the latest, and we sure haven't got time to wait for the board meeting. And that was part of the role of ad hoc?
That was, how I saw, was public safety having nothing to do with it anymore, per se. The ad hoc committee acting, handling.
So who's managing, I understand.
The chair, what I, how I saw it was, I saw it, I was going to, I would like to, I wanted, would have liked to have seen George be chairman of the ad hoc committee. Then the
See that.
Heads of departments from the village, the, near Gloria, Mark Rickert, and Mark Eklad. And then there's two citizens who agreed, or I had asked to be on, if they'd be on there, Gene Schefflin and Wally Gregerson would be, agreed to be on there. That's, what, six people? All right, so we have somebody from the board, two citizens, and our staff members to handle the construction process. And then report to the board like any other committee would. And if they have a meeting, then, you know, they don't need to post it, per se, but if you have any input, go down there and, and deal with it at that basis. I don't know whether we'd be talking about it at the board level. You know? Did you see that window was cracked or something? I mean, I don't know where.
No, I just see, I, I see it as updates. I'm looking at it in terms of who's managing the project.
Exactly, like, for example, the sooner we get it together, the better, because of the first pay request from the architect, they get the chance to look at it, see what went over it. And they give it their thumbs up, if you will, and goes to finance, and then somebody got to take a look at it.
So is the ad hoc committee, we all, in Finance, we started talking about the approval process with respect to the expenditures related to the building, okay? Whoever the electrical contractor eventually says, okay, I'm, I have completed twenty-five percent of the project. So therefore, here's my bill for twenty-five percent.
Well, if.
And just what should that process?
Well, what I'd do is if, if you got some pay requests coming in from them, if you're on the Finance Committee, I'd be looking at them for a budget and seeing how things are going. You get an update. What's, what's going on? Do we have X amount to spend? Are we staying in budget? Are we getting X amount done?
But we wouldn't have any ideas to whether or not the work is ever, was even done, in Finance. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, but that's what you're asking for the update.
Yes.
So before you say, yes, we'll pay for it, you get an update. You can say no. So before you say, yes, we'll pay for it, you get an update, you can say no at the finance.
Sure.
You can say, no, we're not gonna pay this bill, because I don't think the answer you came up with, George, is very good. So, I mean, it's kinda like Kevin, you know, it, it's-
Alright, so this committee then, you're obviously aware-
Yeah, they gotta approve it, they can submit it for approval.
Okay.
But then there better be somebody there, and George is on, as a board member, is at the meetings and-
I just wanna make sure there was a collective understanding as to who's managing this project, okay? And who's looking at the bills as they come in, and saying, yes, this is, uh, this bill is legitimate, given the work we've observed, the architect has signed off, could well be the building inspector has signed off.
The ad hoc committee and then-
And the ad hoc committee has looked at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is definitely not something that one individual is gonna look at and approve, this is definitely gonna be the work of six people. It's a continuous check and balance.
Yeah, for example, I can't see the finance committee paying any related bill unless it went to the ad hoc committee first.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to, you know, send one in, I mean, they, I mean, the contractor and people associated will know the, the channel. And it's, but I think we should get it started fairly soon, so-
Will there be the architect or a general contractor who will be kinda passing that to the ad hoc and saying-
Yeah.
That this is okay to pay?
Isn't the process, the general contractor's doing the work, they get so much done, they send their bill to the architect, the architect-
The architect's okay, yeah.
Fifty percent's okay.
He, he's there to justify it, so he'll be, he'll probably come to that meeting with the pay request. You got any questions, go over it, or, you know, this is that big of an addition, take a little walk around yourself, you'll see. They say they put in a foundation, I don't think they're gonna slip that by you. You know?
In fact, we did talk to Todd about this, and he did indicate to us, yes, that's part of his role.
That's part of their role.
Is to ensure that the-
So they go through on it.
The contractor's doing what he's been contracted to do.
Well, we talked about just very briefly, what, who is the, what is the purpose of the ad hoc committee, why does it exist, what, what is its role?
I see the ad hoc committee as a buffer between the architect and the board.
I see it as something, as a, as a, as a mechanism, be able to react appropriately for this building process, and also to get the input from, uh, to have, uh, not some other eyes looking at it. But we, it has to, you have to rea- we have to react to things and, given our current situation.
No, I like the idea of the ad hoc committee, I like, I like that idea. And I like the structure of the residents you've got on it.
You know, the, the architect, um, eh, he'll look through everything, because he'll make sure that the job's done to code, you know, people are using the right material, that's, that's, that's his job, that's- The, the building inspector will only come in at the tail end of things, or periodically check, but you can't count on the building inspector to make sure it's going up right.
It looks like Tom has something he wants to inject here.
Here's my concern is that, and what I was thinking of the ad hoc was, this is a remodel project, so you, you always got stuff that you don't expect. And it's a week from, we just had a board meeting, the next week that comes up, and somebody says, we gotta have a change order here, because this isn't gonna work according to the way it was on the plan, and we need to make a decision, so the project can keep going forward. They get together, the ad hoc committee, they look at it, and they say yea or nay, or do it some way or whatever, and then-
Remodel or do it, not guarantee it ain't gonna go according to plan.
This committee can be called at a moment's notice. And I don't-
They have the technology.
Yeah, right.
They're, they're ready and willing to go there in the blocks.
I can spill on that.
But not, just make sure we all understand what Tom just described, that what, what the board is delegating to the ad hoc committee the ability to make those kinds of decisions, I just wanna go and understand that.
Right. So basically, the ad hoc committee will be a decision-making entity that has full power to make building, construction, decisions, change orders, any aspect to the project, and ultimately then will report to the finance committee.
Now, they also have the ability to put it to a complete stop and wait for a board meeting, too, to see what everybody's opinion might be.
That's a good point, that's a very good point.
So, I mean, it, it's, just somebody has to be able to react.
Sure. Does, does a committee like this ever have a chair and a co-chair? I mean, like Gloria's so connected with everything that goes on up here, and, and George's too, but is it ever either, could it be an either-or?
Well, I don't think it's-
Or would that make things messy?
You have one chairman just for, you have your, kick you to the head.
We were talking a little earlier, and Gloria's so connected with- I understood that too. Yes, as George, but just thought I'd throw that out there to stir the pot a little.
Yeah, well, hey.
You're doing a good job. You just stirred it.
The original motion, and what was, that was in your, your minutes, was to establish an ad hoc committee consisting of following people, who would have responsibility for managing this construction project.
Yeah, I call it a management-construction committee, or management, project management.
Yeah, I don't like the ad hoc, so-
Project management is good.
And with the individuals on the committee, I think it covers all of the necessary bases.
Oh, I'm very, I'm very pleased with the, with the people that are on it, I mean, it makes sense.
So I'd be comfortable giving them, the power to make some decisions.
One of the issues that we would have, and I appreciate that, uh, your input, and I appreciate Mark's confidence, but if you were to have two or three board members on it, then every time you got together, you couldn't get together, because you'd have to post it as a public meeting. And so by only having one board member on there, that's not necessary.
Is it just one, or is it two?
One.
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 We're not just smoking crack every night over there.
How did you get out of those? Yeah, you. He's got his own building, aren't you?
Um, and the, the, that motion doesn't include Mark Eckblad, so it should be, it should-
Is that a name?
I mentioned Mark, didn't I?
Mark Richard? Alright. That's right, I mean, that's, uh-
Well, if you're using that to make the next motion.
Right. So the motion that's coming from public safety is to, um, recommend, uh, board approval of a construction management committee consisting of trustee Klein, uh, village administrator Choester, chief of police, Richard, and supervisor public works Eckblad, and, uh, two residents at large, Gene Scheflin and Wally Gregerson, uh, who would collectively constitute the construction project, construction management committee. And said committee will be responsible for the management, the construction management of the Village Hall Edition project. That the motion that I-
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, it sounds like you got it.
Yes.
Then I'll throw that out as a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second, yeah. That's when Wally's wondering if he was gonna get a hat.
Hard hat?
I'll second it.
Colleen Beaches at the-
Oh, he did?
I did.
So we did change the name of it?
Yeah, it's Construction Pro- Management Committee. Construction Management Committee.
Any other comments, questions, I mean, we've already had some discuss- we had some discussions in finance, just about some of the process, which we've now replicated here, which is, you know, how do the bills come through, how do they get audited? How do we know that we are in fact acting in an appropriate fiduciary manner to protect the expenditure of public funds? I think the answer is, we've now got three people who are actually gonna be looking at it, the general contractor by definition does, the architect reviews it, we might even ask Cedar Corp, God forbid, to look at something. And then ultimately it goes to finance, to the construction management committee. And they will oversee it, so I'm comfortable that at least there's appropriate oversight of the expenditures.
Well, something that you just said somewhat facetiously, but it does raise a question, and that would, what would Cedar Corp's involvement in the project be? Do we need to clearly define that, or not at all?
I'm not so sure you really have any defined role, unless we ask them to do something, okay? Not once you have an architect, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I ask simply because they are the, the village engineering firm, and because I wanna make sure that we discuss that here tonight, so that there are no preconceived notions about-
Now, as far as I'm concerned, Elliott, I mean, the architectural firm that we have retained is the primary engineering driver on this project. And he then handles the construction, well, once we let the bids, there will be a, uh, a general contractor who will have responsibility to make sure that the subs get their respective, uh, things done on time and within budget. And I'm, I was being facetious about Cedar Corp, but, you know, I believe that is the appropriate chain of command. Would you have any?
Yeah, I typically, that's the way it works with the architecture.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing that could possibly transpire if there is, you know, there would need to be, need to be, some survey work to be done, or some total-
Sure.
-survey, or some of those things, site-specific.
Hmm.
That would be-
Okay. Alright.
Those numbers, those dollar estimates are actually part of that seven sixty estimate. I have some of that survey done, so.
Okay, boss. Alright, um, any other comments on the creation of the construction management committee, I think, I think it's a good idea. Okay, alright, so we have a motion, we have a second, we haven't voted on it yet. Any other comments before I call for a vote? Okay? If not, all in favor of creating the committee as, uh, so described in the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Larry, as you read over the public safety minutes, there is one on municipal court, is the understanding that we do or do not need to vote on that as a board?
Is that an option, or was that a mandate?
Was it a bail schedule? It is an option? So we don't have to vote on it as a board?
No, it's, it's an option, if it's an option, then we need to vote.
Oh, okay. It's a very slight adjustment to the, uh- But it's still an ordinance change, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just, don't, yeah, is the, uh, isn't our, isn't our ordinance drafted so that we just match what the state is, and when the state changes, we change also?
I don't believe so.
I'd recommend that we look at that and make that change, so that then, because the state does periodically change it, and typically the municipalities follow what the state bond schedule is, and so I'd recommend that we, if we're gonna make a change, that we change the, our ordinance, so that it always matches what the state has, and then as the state changes, we automatically change it.
Well, my only comment on that, Tom, is that what the state does is it, it, isn't there, Mark, if I remember reading that, it, it's a range. And so what we're doing is picking numbers within that, the ranges that they had. And that's why we have the nu- that's why we have the numbers that we do here, because they fit within the range change from the state.
So the state's change-
My thought on that, with you, is that I wouldn't get that specific, I guess, I would, so the range for the state bond's bail schedule is larger than the range that we're picking, is that what you're saying?
Um, we're picking a, a, a specific amount, whereas the state gave us a range, so we're picking an amount within that range.
Do we even need to?
Again, I guess my recommendation would be is that you don't do that, I mean, that just takes away the discretion of the court, you know, in doing it, and I guess I would, my thought would, I'd still stick with that, we adapt the state bond schedules such that when the law changes, ours changes, and if, if the court wants to set a specific amount for various things, they can do that internally without, without the board adopting and making-
And that's where I've got on this conversation, do we even need a motion to do this? Because I don't think these fall into our list of fines and schedules.
These are really the traffic ones, I assume, Mark, is that right?
Well, for the most part, but there were a couple others, too, and we call, I'm not sure if they're-
If we're changing an ordinance at all-
Uniform misdemeanor bail schedule.
It needs to come back, I need to build, to write the ordinance, and come back, have a number, and be published, and-
Okay, then would you work with Mark on?
Sure.
Or, or maybe even, are we actually changing an ordinance? The change of our local ordinance?
The change, the, the way that I understand tonight, or, or the change in that bond schedule was just the fact that the state is now allowing up to, I believe it's twenty-eight dollars for the court costs, which then, of course, with all the other subsequent costs, increase that fine amount. And I, and I thought, when the judge and I had talked about it, there was something here relative to the fact that if there is a change in the bond schedule, that the judge must bring it to the board for approval.
In our current ordinance, you're saying?
I'm sorry?
In our current ordinance, it says that, is you're saying?
That's my understanding, as to what he brought to me, I was just reviewing that to try to see if I could find-
It says, in this, it says, uh, code ninety-dash-one, does that help?
Maybe that's one of all the, the traffic increases. That just includes all state traffic law into our municipal ordinance, it says, it looks like ninety-dash-two deals with penalties, I don't know if-
It's different.
We'll get that while we're sitting here.
I can do that.
When the range was fifteen to twenty-three, did we as a municipality have a fixed number of twenty-three?
As we currently have.
That we do have a fixed number of twenty-three.
Correct.
So, looking at this, a person could say, when the range was fifteen to twenty-three, we, we as a municipality chose twenty-three. Now that it's gone from twenty-three to twenty-five, we could elect to go to, or twenty-three to twenty-eight, go to twenty-eight, since we're at the limit of it before, just, that would keep some, at least be uniform.
Tom was gonna look at the ordinance quick and see if, it may well be adequate, if we don't have to change anything.
Like, I guess the only reason I wanna make sure that it's addressed tonight is because I have to write my office with the numbers, put the order in, yeah. I hate to give people, you know, the wrong number.
Can we come, can we come back to the court elements, get a share, when in fact, you know, show us differently on this idea? That's a good idea, yeah. Well, while they're pursuing that, we'll just move on to discussion on the next, next title, yeah, next item on the agenda, which is wildlife management, I put that on there, George. And you, then you talk about it.
Well, and the, and the only reason-
I'm done talking about them quadrupeds out in my yard.
The only, the only reason, no, I, the only reason I put it on the agenda is that I continue to get requests from residents who said, whenever you're going to deal with this deer herd issue. And I said, well, right now, we don't have any money in the budget to deal with it. So that's, that's kinda where we're at. Does that mean the issue is dead? And I said, well, I guess it depends on how you define dead. What I don't know is whether or not there's any, what, what if somebody was willing to come in here and do, you know, some kind of deer herd shrinkage for us for no cost? Would you want to do that, yeah?
Let's think of three.
Provided they have-
Pardon? Is that a valid option?
Uh, in fact, I've had someone make that offer, from a, I think a qualified firm, I have to, you know, we'd have to make sure they're qualified, but just assume for the moment that they're qualified.
So long as, I just be concerned about the village liability, that's all.
Yep. Just assume for, yeah, and I'm not trying to nail you down here, I'm, I'm not looking for a motion here, I'm looking more for the issue of, do we think it's a problem? I mean, if we could, using lethal means, shrink the population of the deer in the village at little to no cost, would we wanna do that? Would you wanna proceed with that?
I would recommend that we do proceed with, uh, checking into reducing the deer population.
What are you, Sandra? I'm looking for a discussion, I'm not looking for a motion.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, I love deer, but, you know, I stop for them every single morning.
But it's, it's a difficult issue to deal with, I know that there are some residents who would like us to definitely initiate lethal, lethal action immediately. The people live right next door to those people, uh, one group is ambivalent about whether we do it or not, and another says, no, I don't want you to do it all. But we've clearly had a large chunk of people coming from one area of the village, Donna Galad saying, you know, we really need to do something. We had a group down from Riverside saying the same thing, and we had the same thing from, from Helen Street. And I know that there's mixed feelings on that, even within that area. So, we've kind of laid it out with financial, and, and Mark had made the point once before, do I wanna spend five to ten grand a year shooting deer? The answer is, I don't think we got that kind of money.
I think, yeah, Mark made a good comment, it's a nuisance problem, not a safety issue.
Yeah, and, I'm not so sure I would necessarily agree with that unilaterally, I think it is a degree of a safety issue. Uh, certainly the people on Riverside have said- Certainly the people down at Riverside have said, you know, you come around out there at six o'clock in the morning and there's deer crossing the street, and they're not near the streetlights, that's a safety issue because you're hitting the brakes and you're almost hitting them. And that's part of the whole safety issue, is the car deer crashes, okay? So is there a degree of safety there? I think there might be.
Well, I wouldn't mind shrinking, I'll go on record as saying, so we, obviously, we have too many deer, and I, I wouldn't, I would support thinning it somehow, for whatever that's worth.
Go ahead. I'm on record saying I couldn't care less. I couldn't, I really couldn't care less.
Wait till you hit a deer on your way out of here, then?
I've hit, I've hit deer.
I was opposed to it before, but I think most of my opposition is related to spending money to do it. I don't have a problem, I, I kinda like them, but I'm not hearing all the complaints you are. So, if there's a cheap way to deal with the problem, I'd listen to it.
I don't think there will ever become an issue where we fail to see deer running around, no matter how much within the population.
We won't.
We are going to see deer. The DNR is quite emphatic about us thinning the herd is okay, eradicating the herd is not okay. So, the answer, you're absolutely right, Jim, we'll never, by law, eradicate the herd.
I was more concerned with what the board sent him on the whole issue, if suddenly economics was not a big deal.
Can you have some for pets?
Changes a lot.
Probably not. Probably not even require a referendum.
We used to have a pet.
Get our PD involved. Okay, that's all I wanted to talk about on that issue.
At the next meeting, you're gonna let us know how we're gonna do this for free?
You ready, Pete? All right, old pine.
The, uh, I've gone over this with Mark. The, what the judge is really looking at, there's two issues here, there's the uniform bond schedule for traffic, and that's the state, and the ordinance provides, we follow through, when state changes, we change. But then there's also a deposit with respect to other local ordinance violations, and that's what the judge wants to increase by, so that he's in line, don't even resource to the traffic stuff.
Okay, so we...
And that, and that's, and the ordinance doesn't require that it get approval from the board.
Right, and that's, and that's where he brought that forward, and, and under the 90, you've said the ordinance is not there, it's under section 26 dash 3, which basically talks about the deposit schedule for municipal ordinances, other than traffic, must be adopted by the board based on his, I guess, suggestion or recommendation, and then posted at the clerk, clerk of court's office as well as the police department, so that obviously officers and what, and the clerk of court are both looking at the same, I guess, cheat sheet of what's...
Okay, so, so if we need to change the ordinance, then you and Laura will have to work together to develop the appropriate...
And I don't think...
Language.
Unless he, he feels differently, I don't thi- I think the ordinance...
The ordinance is correct.
Works with making the change as the state allows.
The ordinance...
Reference to traffic.
The ordinance changes, what people have to pay for their traffic deposits for misdemeanors
Right.
changes as the state statute changes.
Yep, okay.
And then, the ordinance provides for other local things, that the amount is not set forth in there, it's just on the schedule, and if the amount's gonna change for the local ordinance for things other than traffic, and he makes a recommendation, which his recommendation is $5, increase apparently, and that we have to approve that, the board has to. And so I think that we can do, the ordinance doesn't need to be changed, it's just whether you're okay increasing it by that amount.
And for the most part, those types of, just to give you examples, disorderly conduct, it's not a traffic violation, it's a, I guess, a violation of, of state law, but then we've adopted an ordinance that makes it a lesser fine amount to do those things relative to our municipal court. So, those are the items that he can recommend. Explain it.
Yeah, that's enough, yeah, we got it.
What ordinance number did you say again, 26...
26 dash 3.
Then I would ask, Tom, if our motion here that we made at Public Safety is adequate for a motion to be made here at the board to accommodate these numbers?
I think that we should, yeah, the motion that's in with the committee was adoption of Judge Wopat's proposed bail schedule, and I would say for non-traffic matters. Because that's what he's related to.
And for the traffic matters, it's just...
The traffic matters, we've already adopted the, the state's bond schedule, and as that changes, ours changes, so we don't have to... That hap- that's the reason for this change, is because the state changes.
I gotta raise a nit, I'm sorry. The notion of modifying this is not an agenda item coming out of Public Safety? For the next board meeting? Yes, February.
All right, but perhaps what we'll be able to do, Mark, during our next Public Safety meeting on the 11th, is to make sure we get the issue statement written in such a way that will be easily understood by everybody, and then it'll be a little bit cleaner when we come before you in February.
Just a one-line simple motion would be adequate, given the amount of discussion we have.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, now moving on, Public Welfare.
Um, can I just ask a quick question? If the chief happens to know off the top of his head, I was curious what the animal complaints were? Was there an instant breakdown, or were they, were they strays, just sort of walk there?
Typically, they're barking dog.
Oh, noise.
Right, strays, and I don't recall...
Well, I don't know. Most of the dogs can't fill out a form, they gotta bark.
No, dogs can't, there's all those, but we, we have not. But I think if there's one over, maybe two on there, they're barking.
Yeah, there's four.
Wild deer.
Um, Public Welfare, we did not meet in the neighborhood center, so I don't know the court. We do have a comment that I think follows, follows the Public Welfare review. And that is, I've gotten a few complaints from my neighbors now that we have the nice sidewalk running down Helen Street. I myself have, and this is kind of a personal complaint, I, I don't know if this is the best way to bring this up to the committee, but, um, we have a lot of animal leftovers in our landscaping, which I have to clean up every week. And I've had other, other people complain that people are not picking up after their animals, letting their animals do their business in other people's yards and leaving it, and, and I think it's a... I, I don't know what to do about it.
I think we have an ordinance.
I know we do have an ordinance.
I'm not sure how to engage you in force.
How do we publicize that a little more, maybe, let people know that there is a penalty for doing that?
There is an ordinance on it, and I, actually, it was addressed by one of the Neighborhood Watch groups, there was a lot of problems. And I know that the park board has kind of taken a step with the help of the Neighborhood Watch group to put up the little, I guess, the doggy baggies in the little, in the, in some of the parks, and that's, that's kind of a long-term project that they'd like to get that incorporated throughout the village, so access to those baggies is easier, thinking that, you know, we're kind of in a society where the easier the better, that you're gonna get more production out of people that, uh, don't have to work as hard. Again, that probably doesn't relate to the, most of the citizens here in North Hudson, but, uh, for some it is. And I guess, about the only thing we can really do to try to curb that problem be, you know, there was actually a letter written to the editor by several members of that Neighborhood Watch group, kind of as a, to try to get people to, to change their habits. I guess the only other option that we would have is if you actually see somebody, or see someone's dog, and see them not take care of that problem, is to actually try to get a description, if you know who that person is, and literally to call the police department and, and get a case started on that.
Or run them over.
Whether or not that's gonna change habits, uh, we, we seem to have the reputation in North Hudson of the speed limit is 25, and we must abide by that, and, and people have that feeling, and I guess if we start, uh, taking action, or at least making people aware of that, that ordinance, that might be something that...
I, I guess awareness is more what I'm looking for rather than enforcing, you know, the dog poop law.
Very good, and, and a lot of the areas, I mean, there are, they are signed, I mean, most of, or all of our parks, I think there's signage related to that.
Actually, I created a sign, I put it in my own yard. I don't know if that's why I'm getting more.
Hey, Mark, what size bags are in the park?
Little size bags?
Well, I thought they were for... I had to break some bags, yeah.
Mark, I, I do have an, this is honest, now don't laugh, but, uh, is, is it possible to create an ordinance? And, and I'm sort of serious, but if you're walking a dog and you do not have the means, such would be a bag to pick up its feces, that you could get a slap on the wrist or something, or? I mean, I know this sounds crazy, and don't laugh.
Fortunately enough, I think anything's possible, and I, and I think that's, if this board decides to go that route, then, you know, we would obviously take action to, to enforce those ordinance.
It would have to be a board decision and just say, you know, you don't get a...
Not something I can go out and...
Right, right, right.
I think that's gonna come up right after we, when we make plans to invade Roberts.
We just came off the deer topic, so, but it's just, you know, it would make sense if you see somebody out there and they don't have the means to pick up, you know, that they're, you know, ultimately gonna be in violation.
Run them over.
And then I guess you get into the idea of, well, what if their dog, I mean, they may be taking them up for exercise, what if their dog potentially would not, you know, excrete their waste in somebody else's yard, and they wait till they get home or something? And so I think, yeah, I'm not gonna go to the political representation of that, but I think that there, there would be a lot to discuss on that topic, you know? But, but it is, I think it's definitely something that I've heard a lot of complaints about, um, more of an informer, or informal version of kind of what, what Sandra's talking about, where people just come up to you and say, you know, what can we do about this? Like, again, a lot of what you're saying is that they don't want people fined, they don't want court, you know, situations where you have someone sitting in front of the judge saying, you know, yes, judge, I did allow my, my animal to defecate on someone's sidewalk or on the yard, uh, you know, and kind of creating some time and expense on that part of it. But it is something of an informational point that, that people need to get out, because I think come spring now, once all the snow melts, you're gonna find those piles instead of individual, it is, for those homeowners.
Um, when I walk my two dogs, I have three to five bags on me at all times.
Good.
And sometimes still, that's, that's a discussion.
You're walking around with a bag on, is that what you're saying?
Um, Glen Oaks and, um, the, no, the, the train park, yeah, that, that one's Glen Oaks, and then Eagle Woods. So Glen Oaks and Eagle Woods, to start with for this year.
Around those two locations, so he can...
You can pick up a bag.
And we'll be resupplying those as they, if one ever...
Yeah, the Neighborhood Watch is gonna work on that, and...
What kind of bags are they, are they self-delivered or wrapped?
I haven't looked at them, I can't see, Michelle took them.
Did you have any other, uh, did you get enough input on this topic, then?
I just, you know, I just wanted to get it out there for information, maybe get a little publicity on it, and awareness.
I guess I have a question, will there be a welfare in January meeting?
Uh, well, that's kind of up in the air because, uh, we didn't have an agenda before, and I know you need to, but I, so Jim's gonna be out of town quite a bit, and so am I, or, um, right in that area, so we can't nail down a date, so it may be better that we just go to a February meeting.
Okay.
Nothing else is pressing.
All right. Moving on, Park Board.
We didn't meet last month either, but we had something left over. The swim buoys at, um, Brown's Beach need to be replaced. So I recommend that the, we authorize the Park Board to purchase four buoys, model B961R at $119 each, plus $90 shipping and handling for Brown's Beach, total cost $566.
Did you wanna do that, like, immediately?
Well, we can't, we can't.
Or you, you just look...
We're obviously not gonna put them in, but it would be nice that Mark could just go...
I was surprised, I was just looking at the request for the swim buoys.
Well, it's actually supposed to be last, that's what we get. So yes, then we won't, then we don't have to bring it up again if we can decide today.
That's right. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion? It's a spending decision, so, uh, we will do a roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Marx? Sanders? Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes, okay. No, no. Roll call, yeah, okay, new business with the board. Just a, a quick kind of announcement for you members of the board. February 13th and 14th is, uh, dates when elected representatives from this area will go down to Madison and meet with our elected representatives for the purpose of, uh, beating them over the head on three particular issues this year. Economic development priorities, transportation priorities, and workforce education priorities. It is coordinated by the St. Croix Economic Development Corporation, Jackie Bradham in particular. So if any of you are interested in doing that, uh...
What was the date?
February 13th and 14th. Elected representatives from Polk, St. Croix, and Pierce Counties. Go down to Madison, meet with a whole variety of elected, uh, state representatives, as well as Senate people, and just talk about what our concerns and issues are. But February 13th and 14th. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, okay? So that was number one, number two, um, are, are you running, re-running?
Yeah.
You saw the papers, all right. So that means that Joe is running, Colleen is running, Mark is running, that's just what happens, we're all sitting on the same side of the table tonight, as am I, so therefore, at least we have candidates for the three trustee and one village, village president position that are open, and I thank the candidates for, uh, running and continuing your community service.
Have there been any other papers that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, and not that you are aware of, right?
Well, Laurie is not aware of them.
Then...
And...
And I gotta call it in from Steve Tracy, Steve Tracy's firm is, will become a part of Larson Allen Accounting Firm, which is actually a Twin Cities firm, but his comment was the service will be transparent, we'll still be dealing with Steve Tracy, his offices will still be here in Hudson, they'll still maintain their offices in Rice Lake. Steve Schreider will be, continue to be our accountant. So it'll be transparent, not event-type change, but I just wanted to make you all aware of that, okay? And Larson Allen is not a relative of mine, whoever Larson Allen is.
Somebody's already asked that.
Yeah.
That's my next question.
I don't even know how they spell the name, and they probably spell it wrong. All right, and, your turn. Okay. That's it, then? You have a second?
I do.
Okay. All favors, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.